Good morning and welcome to the May 7th Workshop of the Orlando City Council. And today, we are going to get a Sun Rail update. We've been working on Sun Rail for a long, long time. And in January, we, I guess we didn't break ground, we drove the first spike. Right? So, since Narin or Toni has been here last, they have completed the purchase of the right-of-way for the corridor for Phase 1. Maybe they have it all for Phase 2. They'll update us on that as well. They've started laying the second line of track, north and south, in the city. And I haven't actually had an opportunity to go out there yet, but that is quite a process. They hauled it in on a flat car, and I guess Narin will update us on how long each of those pieces of rail is. They've begun market research. They have started the initial construction of the platforms. And we had our most recent Commuter Rail Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. Narin offered to come in and brief each of the local funding partners. So, I accepted that invitation, and she is here to do so, Narin. Let me mention two things. This is a series of workshops that we kind of put together. The last workshop, we had focused on the limo expansion that will service the Church Street Station, Church Street Station Station, Church Street Station Station, of Sun Rail, and then expand limo service. And the next two workshops that we have will focus on transit-oriented development at the hospital sites, north and south of downtown. Narin?
Thank you for having me, Antoni. There's lots of nice slide shows for us to show you of our progress that we've made. And I thought we would start out because we had our groundbreaking, and I think a lot of you were there. I have an appreciation plaque for all of you. It says, "With much appreciation to the Orlando City Council for all that you have done in support of Sun Rail." And so, I'm going to pass these out now.
It's always a good way to start, with a gift.
Thank you.
Thank you, Narin.
You're welcome. Except on behalf of Toni. Thank you.
Just doing that big full funding grant agreement ceremony, you know, just that little plaque just signifies all the hard work you've all done. And we couldn't have done it without you. And we really, really do appreciate how you've hung in there with us, and want this as your destiny for your city as well. This just shows the Phase 1 that we're building as we speak. And you know all the details, as far as the morning service, the afternoon service, and two hours off-peak service. Again, this is what they are building now as we speak. We've worked on the color scheme, and it's high-tech, environmentally friendly, as you know, and wireless internet. It's really going to help a lot of folks. I think a lot of you were there, if not all, and do you remember how hot it was that day?
Yes.
It was the hottest day ever, wasn't it? And I just had a shift on. I don't know how you guys did it with your suits or anything. But it was a great, great, wonderful day. That was a picture for that. We did purchase the corridor, as you know, and closed. And we are now running a railroad. And trust me, it's a little scary at first. Whenever you go over those tracks, when you know you're the owner, you're looking at it two or three different times differently. And so, we've got a good team together. There's a lot of people behind the scenes working on this. We have a whole team that's gone out and done inspections. We've already done some replacement with some of the bridge parts and stuff, so things are going well. And we're programming our work program as part of the whole maintenance of the whole 61 miles. This was the groundbreaking ceremonies. And again, happy, happy day. Yeah, the next thing is the video of the groundbreaking. I think you're going to like that, if you haven't seen it before.
Good morning, and welcome to the Central County Council. We're starting to have you here, and we are happy to be a part of this.
Today's event marks not the beginning of the construction, but the beginning of a new chapter in transportation in Orlando, Central Florida. In just two years, Sun Rail trains are expected to start rolling down from this track right next year. There'll be a station right here where you can board the train. How about that? Two years from now, unbelievable.
Today means you're going to actually see construction workers building the tracks and building the stations for this great old transportation of Orlando.
This is so exciting. This economic development is an opportunity to help people go to the service and put people to work and build it in Orlando.
We're doing it today. We are actually putting people to work.
Since we have made the announcement, just around the four locations that are in the city of Orlando, there has been over half a billion dollars worth of development. And it's been announced that each case will cost something that's not happening.
This is a reminder, clearly the leaders of the impact over the years, just right off the bat, we're talking about this area, we're talking about major projects on hospitals.
Anywhere you see these systems put in place, there is great economic activity. We have an initial 12 stations. We have had a billion dollars worth of announcements of construction and projects along the route. That's not counting another half a billion in the project itself. So, that's a significant economic generate. Plus, it's a great way to dependively get around these communities because we're special traffic.
Providing choices, providing choices for people in Central Florida, that you can have other means of getting to others downtown, or getting to the Magic Game, or getting to work. So, it's truly, truly providing choices to folks that we use our transportation system.
This is a milestone day for Central Florida, ushering in a new era of transportation options. This is something that really emphasizes our partnerships and collaboration. So many people want to make this day happen.
Mayor, you had your Sun Rail tie on that day, didn't you?
I did. The only one person that was more glowing was you.
Yes, I bought a new yellow sweater, too, you'll see soon. Yes, I had to keep the Sun Rail colors going. Commissioner Ortiz, nice to see you. Got a little plaque there saying thank you for all your hard work for Sun Rail. Okay, I'm a little under the weather, so bear with me. The Sun Rail Phase 1 contracts, they've all been advertised. We are preparing for the operation and maintenance contract as we speak right now, waiting for industry review comments. DBE participation, we have been working diligently on DBE participation, and this shows specifically on each of the contracts that we do have, where we're at. The FTA goal is 8.14%. And this just shows where we're at right now in our processes. We continue to work with all of the firms and try to get them to increase during the life of the contract their DBE goals. So, that actually shows you the percentages as we speak today.
Just to give you a little bit of an update on all of the contracts and where we are, our big one, our design-build-maintain activities. On November 3rd, the joint venture of Archer Western Railworks actually took over the maintenance of the 61-mile corridor. And the significance of that is exactly, it's the first time in the history of the state of Florida that our DOT forces is actually maintaining a railroad. Down at Tri-Rail, CSX still maintains that railroad. So, it's being maintained right here in Central Florida. We're also finishing the design of the track work and the signal work. We've also done a lot of clearing and grubbing up north in our Segment 1 for construction. We're also building platforms. If you have a chance to go by the Ultimont Springs Station, or the Sanford Station, the DeBarry Station, all of those platforms are being constructed now. And we're starting to build our subgrade and our subballast for our double tracking up north. We also have had a lot of activity on our gopher tortoises, and actually have already, we've got a lot of that at the Lake Mary Station, and we've already actually trapped about 28 of them. So, we're getting ready to move. I just wanted to mention that because there's been a lot of news stories about the gopher tortoises. Here's a few pictures of the construction up near DeBarry. You can see where they've done some clearing and grubbing and getting ready for the subgrade and the subballast. This train actually is, we've had two rail deliveries of the second track into the project area. These are about 1,400 feet of rail that they actually have. They come in on this long, long train, and yet they actually put them down in the areas where we'll have the second track. So, that was a lot of good coordination with CSX and the Florida Central Railroad. And here, you can see how they take them off that train. It's pretty interesting how they sort of just start rolling them off the train. We have to be careful because we have 126 grade crossings. So, we have to, can't really impact those grade crossings. So, our crews have really done a good job to get that, two deliveries to the project site. Here, you can see the crews are starting to get ready for that second track with the ties and the rail as well up near DeBarry.
Yeah, we are actually building the coaches and cab cars. They are being assembled in New York, and interior design selection's been complete. You can see over there, that's what the interior is, all the nice colors, and that's what the inside looks like. The motive power, which is for the locomotives, that's being built in Idaho, Boise, Idaho.
For our fare collection system, we've advertised that as well, and we've been spending a lot of time on that because what we've got is three different distinct systems. We've got the Votran bus system up in Volusia County, and then Lynx down in here in the Tri-County, and then Sun Rail. So, we have to make sure that when our patrons use all three systems, they will use it, each of them, and they don't have to dig around for two or three cards. So, we've been meeting with Lynx and Votran every two weeks to work on that fare collection and fare policy, so that the transfers between the different systems is seamless. So, we will actually have a sort of a smart card, and to view that, it's like a credit card. And so, that sort of credit card, smart card, will be able to be used on all three systems. And so, the customer won't know the difference of being tapped on to Sun Rail, or tapped on to Lynx, or onto the Votran system. So, we're doing a lot of that implementation and working out all of those rules now with the vendors. This fare collection system was advertised. We did receive three proposals. And this was a joint proposal, or joint procurement between Lynx and the Florida Department of Transportation, again, to make sure the buses are upgraded, to allow that smart card technology, and then Votran will piggyback off the Lynx's contract. So, just, I know that's been a lot of discussion with this commission, as well as others, that we want that connectivity and that ease of use by all three. We have our stations finishes contract. We've divided it into two. Contract 1, we had the notice to proceed, was on March 21st, and they're out there now building the DeBarry, the Sanford, and the Ultimont Springs stations. We've also got Contract 2 advertised now, and that, we should have proposals by May 18th. That was sort of our last construction contract that we advertised for Phase 1. Here are some pictures to show you of the three stations that they're currently looking at. This is US 1792, sort of on your right side of your screen. That's the DeBarry Station, so you can sort of see where those double tracking has come in with the black, as well as the clearing and grubbing of the station activities. This is at Sanford, which is right by State Road, right off of State Road 446. You can see where they've cleared and grubbed, and then they're getting ready to lay those platforms out, as well as the parking areas. And then finally, this is at Ultimont Springs, which is the corner of Ronald Reagan and 436. And so, you can see, that's where our groundbreaking ceremony was held, and the site has been cleared, and they're already pouring platforms and putting the footers in for that. The public involvement and marketing, it's been really interesting getting those folks on board because of what we have to do. This is the contract that we're going to market and reach out to our businesses to make sure that we have riders on day one. The Cunningham Group was selected for that, and we actually have two public involvement folks out on the construction site. And as we get ready for construction, they're going door-to-door, hanging flyers, letting the neighborhoods and all the constituents know what is happening around their neighborhood and what they can expect during construction. And why, we're being very proactive, because we don't want you to get a lot of calls, there's, you know, bulldozers in my backyard, what are they doing? And things like that. So, we're trying to be very proactive and get out there and put the door hangings and stuff, and we'll continue to do so. If anybody of your constituents asks what's going on, please refer them to our offices, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions. We also have opened the Sun Rail City Center, which is right off of Magnolia in downtown city of Orlando. It's right off of the limo line. And so, we have a grand opening on May 14th from 5:00 to 7:00, and we hope you all can sort of just stop in and say hi, and see as sort of an open-door policy for folks that want to know about Sun Rail to go in. We've given you a newsletter up there, too, our latest newsletter. And we've actually also developed our business development plan, because it's so important to get out to those businesses, to let them know what the tax advantages are for having Sun Rail and providing sort of monthly passes to their employees. So, we're also getting ready to do the marketing plan. We have, in keeping on the same lines of the public involvement, business outreach, and marketing, we've been doing a lot of research with UCF. We've surveyed a lot of folks through online survey, intercept surveys on the street, as well as talking on phone surveys. So, more than 2,200 folks were surveyed, and we've also talked to a lot of the major businesses to sort of see what their awareness of Sun Rail was. So, as we go forward and develop our business plan, as well as our marketing plan, we know what we need to do to get that outreach going, for them, to educate them about Sun Rail. So, the awareness is very high. We've been, the results of the research show that about 92% of those folks that were surveyed know about Sun Rail. There is some confusion out there in the market about between high-speed rail and Sun Rail, because, as you remember, those were sort of two proposals at the same time high-speed rail went away, but Sun Rail. So, there's a little bit of confusion out there in the marketplace. But a lot of people are aware of what Sun Rail is. Some of the challenges that we learned through these research is that for their employers and the employees, they want the convenience of the system. They want the system to be able to be very convenient. And I think that comes with the connectivity between Lynx and Votran, that comes into it as well. Also, they need to make sure that it's cost, so that they aren't spending too much for the system, the connectivity that we talked about, the security of the system, and what the schedule. They want on-time performance. The other thing that's really interesting that we learned is that they're always concerned about that last mile, is what they call it, is that when they get off the system, how do I get my last mile? How do I get to where I ultimately want to go? And that's some of the challenges we face as we move forward and get ready for Sun Rail service, is bridging that last mile, making sure they feel secure, making sure the on-time performance is there, and the connectivity is there as well. So, over the next couple of years, you're going to see us out there a lot in getting ready for implementation. We spent so much time getting ready and making sure Sun Rail was approved. Now, we're implementing, so. Some of the things that we were talking about and putting into our market research, as well as our business development, is to start a pilot program with 20 major employers. We actually had a really good conversation with Disney. They have so many employees out there to find out what we can do with them. We want to have 150 companies signed up for the corporate discount program. We want to reach out and tell what the tax incentives and benefits are to the employees and the employees. The federal government actually gives you a tax break for $125 per employee. So, we want to make sure that that education gets out to the employers. We also thought about, a lot of ideas are flowing right now. Have a dedicated customer service line. We're working with Rethink on that emergency ride home, because a lot of working parents, if they use the system and they have a child up in school, they get sick, how can I get home if the train is not where I need it to be? So, we do an emergency ride home plan for them, so they can get home, get that sick child, and do what they need to do, so it's convenient for them. Have a commuter concierge business shuttle services. This is that last mile that we were talking about before. We've already started working with Lynx to reach out to the businesses, so that when the train's there, we'll have bus service, but the bus service isn't going to go to every single place, to make sure we have business shuttle services there to bring the employees that last mile of where they need to go. Going to do social media, that's so hard to reach out to folks these days. Social media is going to be a huge importance of that. Switching over to the transit-oriented development side of it, I know you're going to have a workshop discussing transit-oriented development for Sun Rail. The department has made the step of hiring Tim Jackson from AECOM. Tim, as you may know, has worked here for 30 years, was really involved with the community on the old light rail system. He's our TOD facilitator, and under him, he has a developer response team. And what we're trying to do, we're meeting with every single jurisdiction and seeing how can we facilitate, how can we help with the facilitation of transit-oriented development, to make sure that the development around those stations meets the needs of the community and makes sense. Where should the connectivity with sidewalks go? Utilities, sort of help the jurisdictions with that blueprint of what the cities can look like. We're holding a transit-oriented development forum on May 14th from 1:30 to 4:00, and we've actually invited three developers from all around the United States to do a lessons learned for the community. And you should have all gotten an invitation for that. If you haven't, we'll make sure that we forward that again. These folks have done TOD developments in places like Houston, Charlotte, and even in Miami, right here in Florida. And the thought was just, okay, well, what worked and what didn't work for you? What would you do again, and what you wouldn't do again, as we get ready to sort of build these stations and look for transit-oriented development? So, this is done in conjunction with the Urban Land Institute, and should be a really good forum for all of you that want to come to determine what the area around your stations want to look like. Just to sort of show you where we are, we have done a sketchbook and worked with your city on what the different sort of TOD would look like around. So, here's sort of Florida Hospital with the train in the middle. You see the two parking garage and the health villages. So, that's what they envisioned for their station. Moving south is Lynx Central Station, and we've actually done an animation that we're going to show you next, that will show you pictures of sort of the Rita development and Creative Village as well. So, I'm going to, that's the next sort of video to show you, and I'll point out where that Creative Village is. So, that's the Rita development, just to get you oriented. And Church Street Station, sort of the animation, or the sketchbook to show you as the train comes in, there's South Street to the, sort of the right, the Presidential Ballroom. And then Orlando Health, with their master plan, is looking at that area being redeveloped as Sun Rail comes in. You can see the Amtrak building on the lower. And with that, a lot of information. Take any questions?
Well, good job, Narin and Toni. We certainly appreciate the continued partnership between DOT and the local funding partners. And you guys have done a great job. And thanks for selecting downtown for the Sun Rail Central location. And I want to mention again that the open house is next Monday night from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. Okay, questions? Commissioner Diamond?
Thank you. Congratulations. I think everybody's looking forward to seeing this finally happen. And I want to ask you a couple of things. You know, I've ridden on a number of trains around the country, and have you all looked at other systems and said, "This one's probably the most comparable to what will be happening in Central Florida"? And if so, what system or systems would that be?
Yeah, Toni will go over the details, but we did look at several systems. We looked at Charlotte, we went to Puerto Rico, we went to Texas, and so, there were several. And we did lessons learned around the country.
With the research that we were just going over, we selected five. Salt Lake City, the frontrunner system out in Utah, the TRE, which is the Trinity Rail Express, which is in Dallas-Fort Worth. We looked at Tri-Rail, and we looked at, there's a Sounder system out in California that we looked at as well. It goes between San Diego and LA, more of a commuter rail system. And then, we looked at, the fifth one that we looked at was Railrunner, which is New Mexico, which is, so we tried to pick all commuter rail systems around the country with populations such as Orlando, and to see what they've done. We're still setting up interviews with them to talk about their marketing and their outreach program and things like that, but to see what, we chose those five.
Okay. Yeah, and I was curious to hear, and it sounds like you're in the process of looking at what they've done and things that you'd want to try to do, and maybe things you wouldn't want to do based on their experience. But let me ask you this. I suspect when the first train rolls out, there'll be a lot of attention, people will know about it, it'll be in the news, and then maybe after that, not so much. Have you thought about, as part of the opening, you know, you look at some of the pictures of the cars, they look nice. They look like very nice, very nice cars. Have you thought about having some sort of free ridership for the first day, or two, or three, or something like that, just to get people on there? three or something like that, just to get people on there to experience it and just see for themselves what, what they can expect?
We haven't got to that level yet.
Okay. Well, I think it might be something to, it just seems like you'd want to get people, give them a chance to
Yeah.
To get on there and just see what it's, see what it's about.
Yeah.
And, get them, you know, just like new restaurants do or new businesses do. They'll, they'll do that just to get people in the door. And, I wanted to ask you about the smart card. Is that something where people would still be able to use their, you know, their Visa card or MasterCard or their credit cards? And, then they just get something else? Would it be, would it be that easy?
You know, we're looking towards that as our, sort of the next step. The first, what we're doing is a stored value card, just like what you were, so that you would have, I liken it to what you have for the Sun Pass or the E-Pass where you have your credit card. You sign up and as you need additional value added, it's added. What you're talking about is also a debit card associated with the smart card. And, so, as we get the Fair Collection folks onboard, we'll start those discussions with them on how easy or not so easy to do. I think the technology is there today. It's just a matter, matter of restrictions and things like that of what we can and can't do, you know, with Florida statutes and things like that. So, but, we will be exploring sort of all avenues. The other thing that we are looking at as well is the smart card, the smartphone technology. Remember, because a lot of folks, sort of the next generation is, you're not going to carry even a debit card and you're just going to hold your phone up or something, you know? So, in our procurement, we've asked for open architecture. And, I'm not a real good techie. But, what that means is, is that as the technology continues and develops, our architect, our architecture can develop to have that. Whether it's not a closed architect where that's all we get is a smart card and we can't evolve with technology. So, that was one of our areas in our procurement that we asked for is open architecture. So, we can continue evolving as technology does.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's great. Very wise, just because of the pace things change at.
Yeah.
And, you know, two years from now, who knows what, you know, what might be available or five years, what might be available? It's just incredible to see the pace of, the pace of change. And, remind me also, on the second phase of Sun Rail, that, that starts, the construction starts after the first part is operating? And then, when is that going to be finished?
Yeah, the whole schedule's two years after this. So, if this is going to open in early 2014, yeah, 2014, right? I'm sorry, I'm really feeling bad today. It'll be two years after that. So, once this is open and running, we'll start construction of the second phase, hopefully. We're working on that right now with Federal Transit Administration.
All right, well, thank you.
And, that's our, that's our schedule to do, to do it two years open after this opens.
Okay, great. Well, thank, that was a good presentation. Thank you.
Noran, the Performing Arts Center is scheduled to be open a little bit after Sun Rail is. So, the plan is to be able to ride Sun Rail to the ribbon cutting of the Performing Arts Center. So, you need to make sure that you're on time.
Well, we're working towards that goal very hard.
Yeah, also, Tony, follow up on that question. I've ridden Charlotte and Salt Lake and Denver's light rail system. I haven't ridden their commuter rail system. But, I think, I recall that in both the case of Charlotte and Salt Lake City, they wildly exceeded their, their expectations in terms of their ridership projections, isn't it correct?
Yes. And, that's been frankly, a challenge for us because the trend across the country is to open up and exceed their initial opening day ridership by 20%. And, they exceed their 20-year build within six or seven years. And, so, what we've tried to do with this system, knowing that, is sort of make sure, hopefully, that the parking lots, that we've provided more parking than what we need for 20 years build, as well as the platforms, getting ready for a three-car platform versus a two-car, which we start out as. So, we're, it's been, it's challenging because all of your funding is based on your scope, which is based on your ridership, and it all works together. So, to try to juggle all that, we've tried to overbuild and hopefully, we've nailed it.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor. I really liked seeing the emphasis on the transit oriented design because I know that I've talked to some folks in Orange County and they're like, "Well, why do we need to concentrate on that"? I'm like, "There's so many opportunities." I mean, the old railroad was you put industrial uses next to it. And, those are going to transition as, as that changes. So, I think there's still some people that are stuck in that thinking of, "That's all it's ever going to be." But, there's so many more opportunities. So, I'm really glad to see that you all are doing those transit oriented design workshops because, I mean, when I'm talking about the possibilities around Orlando Health and the things that we're working on, people look at me like I'm a little crazy and, you know, "What are you doing"? And, it's like, "Wait a minute, these are transitional. This makes sense." It's no longer the 1910s technology that you're just going to have, you know, industrial around it. This is different. You can move people and have people living near this and everything like that. So, I think that that's a mindset that has to change in folks. And, I'm glad to hear that you're doing these transit oriented design workshops to kind of educate some folks on what the possibilities are. So, I think that's a really good idea because I've already heard some blowback on that, especially at the Eastern Florida Regional Planning Council. The people that are at that understand what we're doing. But, it's some of the other county commissioners and stuff. So, I think it's really important to do that education process so they understand what, what the possibilities are and what other cities have done. And, I have, I did have one concern though, that I've heard in the neighborhoods, and that's over quiet zones, especially not so much Orlando because we've been kind of working on figuring out how we can work on our crossings to do the four-way gates so that we don't have a lot of noise. And, I know Florida Hospital's really been in the forefront of that because they don't want the horns blowing as the trains go through their campus. But, the concern is, you know, as we transition from Orlando to Orange County, how are we going to handle those, especially the freight that's going to be running at night when we're not running trains? How are we going to do that quietly so we're not keeping people up all night? Because we want people to live next to it. We want to have that kind of transit oriented design. So, have you all thought about how you're going to approach that or?
Well, the quiet zones have not, is not a part of the project, as you are aware, because of that whole cost situation
Yes.
That we talked about. But, what, the good news is, is that we own the railroad. We own the 61 miles. So, we're really in charge of our own destiny. So, if, and I know Metro Plan Orlando has been working with all of the different jurisdictions to do diagnostic reviews, to see about, you know, what kind of changes and improvements have to be for quiet zones. We've been working with them as well. So, I think that the good news with that is that when you do the diagnostics and you see what the costs are, then the, the local jurisdictions can put it into their capital work program to put towards, to work towards the quiet zones as Florida Hospital is doing. I know Winter Park is looking at it as well. So, long-term that they can implement those. So, I think the good news is CSX doesn't own it. We own it. So, any improvement that we make is to our railroad, our community. So, the Florida Department of Transportation has been working to help with those, facilitate those diagnostic reviews, as well as look at which kind of contracting opportunities there may be out with our contracts out there to implement those. But, it's truly a local issue. The locals, if they want the quiet zones, they need to start planning for them as well.
Yeah, well, you know, we're hearing that they want them. But, again, I think that we've done a good job in Orlando actually dealing with our issues. I think the concerns that I'm hearing is, is where, is the boundaries of Orlando going into the county where people are really concerned. And, and, you know, we can only do so much, but encourage
Right.
Again, Orange County to do the right thing.
Right.
And, because, yeah, you know, if they don't have the enhanced crossings, there might be more noise when the, when the freight's running at night.
And, let me just, the freight runs at night today. And, so, we're, CSX is moving eight to nine freight trains off once we start operations. So, the number of freight trains running at night is not going to increase.
Okay.
So, what's there in the activities that there is today? You will not see a remarkable increase in freight train activity at night because of the operating hours, due to the fact that eight to nine freight trains are moving off this line over onto the S-line.
So, there will actually be a decrease in freight running on the lines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's a good thing to tell them though.
Right, right. It's about the same at night as you find today.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but...
So, the decrease is going to be the daytime traffic
Right.
Because of the, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Oh, you see coal trains are moving off of the A-line as well.
They'll come up from the south. Yes, yep.
Okay, Commissioner Ortiz, then Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor. You mean, we want to have a train shaking the ground and, you know, doing the big whistling like my cousin Benny? Anyhow, Noran, Tony, thanks a lot. I'm always bragging about you guys, whatever, I go and, you guys have done such a tremendous job. And, there's so much detail into this. So, thank you so much. Thank you for the effort. I just have a simple question. And, Commissioner Sheehan was talking about this and the workshops and whatnot. But, there's going to be a chance for the community also. Can we come up to you guys and possibly ask for the opportunity of you guys to come out and speak to the community? How was going on and where we at?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we have a couple of groups in my district that would love to hear about where we at right now with this.
Sure. Just give me a call.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for everything.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate the work that you guys have done. Commissioner Sheehan shared the idea about the same concerns that we have with the, with the quiet zones. And, so, we're going to kind of keep working through it and understand some of the logistics of that is a little bit more challenging. One thing that Commissioner Diamond brought up, and you alluded to it with your answer to Mayor Dyer, is as you're looking at other areas, especially in terms of gearing up and ridership and how it moves pretty quickly, what are you learning? What have we changed? I guess I'm asking kind of in a little different way. But, what have we changed our thinking by what we're learning from other groups that have, so far, have, have done this, implemented it? One is that it may move faster than we expect, so we have to kind of be prepared for it.
Right.
But, where were some of their failures and which case that we can take advantage of it?
Well, one of the big failures that, that we learned was they did not start from the ends where they're commuting in, say Volusia-Naciola to, say Orlando. They didn't have big enough parking garage, parking lots. And, so, we started out with a parking lot size at year 20, what we thought the ridership would be at year 20. So, that was one of the biggies.
And, just talking about that, we actually started our lessons learned back in 2005 on this project. And, everything that you see sort of laid out here today is lessons learned from other communities. One of the big ones early on we had was buy the railroad, control the railroad. And, so, I think that's where our local, you all helped us sort of talk with CSX about, "We don't want to just own the tracks. We want to control. We want to be in control of our own destiny. We want to do the dispatch. We want to do the operations and maintenance." That seemed to be a big issue, not only with Tri-Rail, but also out west with the North Star Commuter Rail. When the freight systems are in control of your destiny, they run freight. That's what their priority is. That's their business. Our business is running passenger rail. And, so, what you see today where we're building our operations and control center up at the Rand Yard, where we'll have a dispatch center there, we will have our operations crew who are already maintaining came from some of those lessons learned. So, we sort of did that early on. Some of the other things that they were talking about with us is on-time performance as well. And, that sort of comes into the destiny and dispatch is that when you have an on-time performance up there at about 90%, people, the convenience of it, they will ride it. They will come because they can count on it versus running on some of our roads where you have an accident or whatever. You can't necessarily count every day I-4 is going to be flowing. So, so, that was sort of lessons learned. Now, moving forward, we're doing the same thing. We are bringing folks in for the transit oriented development for lessons learned. What did you learn? What worked at your places to help us sort of look and plan for our stations? As well as all that research that we were conducting and what we were talking with Commissioner Diamond earlier, those five systems, we've already had conversations with them. We're going to go back out there and talk individually to each of them to do the lessons learned for marketing. What, how, it's a challenge right now, and I think all the, the media will tell you, "How do you reach people now"? Because everybody's running in 100 different directions. How do you, they don't necessarily sit down and watch the news anymore at 6:00. They don't necessarily read the paper every morning. Everything is caught on their smartphone or, you know, in Facebook and social media. How do, that's a big challenge, I think, that we're going to see is how do we reach people to tell them, "We're here, we're coming." The benefits of us with the Wi-Fi network onboard, the convenience of us, all of that kind of stuff. I think those are lessons learned that we're going to find out from those different, five different locations around the country. I can't say we have it all before us right now because we're just starting our efforts on our outreach and our marketing and our business development. But, that is going to be our focus, primary focus for the next year because we're going to start rolling stuff out for the marketing a year prior to operations.
You know, I think all of us would share, I mean, I think we are the champions of this. And, I think there's a large core of people that are the champions of it. But, there's also a healthy bit of skepticism out there. And, so, what I have tried to emphasize from, to ours, people I talk to, is the idea of the integration of this. The moment that Sun Rail runs and we can't get to, to Sun Rail through Lynx, or the moment that we can't get to a Magic Game, that moment is the moment when somebody decides whether they're going to continue to run it or not. And, the energy to get them back on again is an incredible amount of energy. Commissioner Diamond is right, there's going to be a lot of fun stuff at front first. And, I, hearing what you guys are doing, you're right on point. And, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing because that's, that's where we're going to end up turning around and saying, "The success isn't building it." That's kind of the easy part. The success is how do you make it running? And, how do you keep it running for the next 20 years in a way that's going to be effective? And, that's, that's what the legwork you're doing now. I so much appreciate what you're doing and get a chance to brag on you, as Commissioner Ortiz says often. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Linum?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I hit the wrong button earlier. Setting off the mute button. Wondered what was going on. Just a couple of issues. I kind of agree with Commissioner Diamond about the free rides. I think that's a great public piece, you know, not for the whole line because we don't want people to get on and like it so much and won't get off. But, just have opportunities, try it out before it actually opens for service. I don't mean the day that we actually start operation, but I'm sure we're going to have some soft runs and have a few people get on there to do that. I like that. I also liked his discussion regarding the debit card. These other cards you can go buy and then you pay somebody $4.95 to add your $500 or what are those prepaid credit cards and all of that technology. But, I think that's kind of jumping ahead of what I was going to get. But, I do know with our technology, we're going to look at all of that, including iPhones like we do when we get on the flight. We don't have, we don't even need our boarding passes anymore. You just put it on your phone and go on through. So, I think that's coming. But, I think down here in central Florida, in the south, where we're not accustomed to commuter trains, whereas the northeast. I mean, when I went to Bryn Mawr in 1968, that's the only way you got from the airport. And, that's the only way you went out to Bryn Mawr from Philadelphia and to all the other places was commuter rail. But, the strangest thing, most people come down from the north and they don't want the commuter trains. They liked them up there, but not down here. But, I think we've, have lots of examples and are traveling with the National League Cities to try them all out. So, I think we're on, on par there. So, I don't have any real issues except for the time issues. People get into work. And, I know the state of Maryland did this a few years ago. And, I think it was Maryland and there was another one there that I talked to, to incentivize companies as the federal government will do with the big companies. Disney and downtown are the largest employers, or Florida Hospital, how do they get the employees in? They're going to have to be incentivized to give cards or whatever to the employees to come in because it's going to relieve some of the traffic, some on I-4. It's going to reduce some of the problems we may hear with, have with air and our environmental issues out there. So, I really think we ought to push, push, push that to let people know. And, the market, for instance, the city. I mean, we do the bicycle thing here and maybe we're going to have something for our staff, except for our firemen. All the firepeople in the police department, they live somewhere else anyway. So, Mayor, we've got to figure out how to, everyone who wants to can ride the train in and get out with the, with the, just a little walking distance over there. But, with the Lynx, I wonder, where are we going to park there? Because there is no parking there now. I hate going over there. You have to park at southeast. And, I know that vacant lot over behind there. How are we going to utilize that for drop-offs and for the park and ride? Or, how are we going to do the Lynx station right here in downtown? And, I was on that committee when we did the metro plan piece and I've forgotten. How do we do that with the Lynx?
Lynx is actually a destination station. In our ridership, there's not a lot of ons. It's mostly offs in the morning and ons in the afternoon. So, the downtown stations all have sort of destination, we have origination stations. So, the downtown stations all have sort of destination, we have origination stations and destination stations. Origination stations are the ones with the parking garage, parking lots, and the destination stations are not the ones, they don't have park and ride lots. There's also-
So if we're downtown and we want to go someplace, we literally have to catch the limo or another bus-
Right.
-get there, get off and go, then same thing.
Right, exactly.
That's why we were talking with Lynx about the smaller buses, the community buses-
Exactly.
-as opposed to the big energy guzzlers and gas guzzlers or whatever. So, that's how we're going to manage that.
Yes.
And we can talk with Lynx about that later, about the buses, but I think people will have to know that they can get on something that's smaller to get them to another destination.
Yes. We have, we have joint meetings with Lynx and Votran, and we're ramping up to make sure we have that connectivity.
Great. And you know, since I've been sitting here, Senator Siplin texts me, and I told him I would partner with him on the job fair, I think you're going to have, he's trying to get done for May 22nd, I believe?
I'm not sure of the date, but I know that our team's working with his team on another jobs fair.
Okay, if we were able to get the varsity club, I think it's 10 to 4 at the varsity club over at the stadium, so I really think that's a great idea to keep the jobs coming. I appreciate you working on the minority participation. Here at the city, we've been quite successful, and, but even with the loops around this economy, we just think it's fear that people who live here ought to have jobs, and some of them should be contracts, but others could be labor, you know, people get a job and go to work and move this and move that. So I am concerned about your maintenance and operation and your fairs contract that is out, not only the technology, but at the number of jobs you've advertised, over 5,000, but is that for the 61 miles, or can we break that down for each area? For instance, people who live near downtown, how many jobs would be generated out of this corridor between Florida Hospital and ORC, or that kind of situation?
Well, the operation maintenance contract is for the whole 61 miles.
Okay.
But they, they've been coming, all the operation maintenance contractors have been coming to each of the job fairs, and they will be at this next one, and whenever we get inquiries, we do try to let folks know which of the companies that have been wanting to go for that project, when are we going to advertise for the operation maintenance?
We'll probably, it's out for industry review right now, to, for the contractors to look at the potential procurement and to give their feedback, so we can make the scope better, and we should advertise it in probably the June slash July timeframe.
Okay. And Mayor, what I'd like for us to do is to have General participate in all of those-
Sure.
...public meetings, so that he's become very good at not just city contracts and jobs, but all across the Central Florida area, he's been very, very effective, that office has been. So, I'd really like to make sure that General Colta is engaged in all of that, whether it's a job fair, whether it's the community meetings, that someone out of that office need to be plugged in and meet all the contractors, so that he knows how, what the criteria for the jobs are, what jobs are needed, and how we can help facilitate it. We've become a great workforce here in the city. I think those were my primary issues, except I know Commissioner Sheehan was talking about the different zones for noise zones and quiet zones, and I think we're going to probably have a report, I'd imagine, on that one, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz?
One more time, I was looking at our chief over here, and I was just thinking, what are we doing in terms of safety? Inside the train, cameras around the train at the stations, law enforcement, how are we going to play that out?
We actually have a combination. We have, on the trains, we will have security cameras on the trains. We will also have a conductor that sort of, we'll have two cars, remember, as we start out, so we have a conductor that's sort of walking back and forth. We also have four CCTV cameras on the platforms as well, sort of monitoring, that are being monitored at our operations and control center. We've also been working with and have regular meetings with all of our jurisdictions, all our funding partners, police and fire, rescue as well, to give them an update on what is going on, because in accordance with our inter-local agreements, the local funding partners are in charge of the security at the stations. So, we've been working with all of them to make sure that we've got that covered as we move forward.
So we're not going to have like New York, a transit police, we'll basically, according to the jurisdiction where we at, whatever happens, that law enforcement agency will take care of the business over there?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds very convenient, that sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just concerned also, I was looking at your design and the pictures, and, you know, after all that effort to do, to create such a great train, especially inside, the accommodations and whatnot, you imagine people committing acts of criminal mischief and that sort of things, definitely like to see that nobody messes up all this credit for you guys have done, so, thank you, thank you so much.
When we traveled to Charlotte and rode the train up there, that, one of the things that I was struck by was the operators there told us that the, being on the transit property and on the train was the safest place in all of Charlotte, that they had no crime at all, and they had cameras everywhere, they captured everybody from the second they stepped foot on transit property to the time they stepped off, and that was a huge selling point, because you think of some cities you go to, and if you're a visitor from out of town, you're scared to get on the subway in New York or some other European places, so I think that's a critical element, that there, we have a zero tolerance for-
Right.
-crime. I just have one last curiosity point, those 1,400-foot rail pieces, I noticed in the pictures that they were being, when you deployed them or dropped them off the railcar, that it was on either side of the existing track? How do you move that 1,400-foot piece from one side to the other?
Yeah, we asked that same question. Actually, some of the existing rail is, in some of those locations, they're, it's actually going to be realigned, the existing track, so in some places, they'll take one of the tracks from what, see, and use the other side. At some locations, they actually put both of them on the same side, so it's where they thought, because the right-of-way is only so wide, and sometimes that track is right down the middle, and so you can't necessarily put the double track on either side, so they've got to build roadbed on-
Got it, so the picture you showed us, they were going to use one of the old pieces on one side, one of the new pieces from the side, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the, I asked the same question, like, wait a minute.
Well, I know it's flexible, but I didn't know how you'd-
I know, a 1,400-piece, yeah, yeah. That actually was a really interesting, it's partnership, because you have to have a federally mandated locomotive engineer, which is through the FRA, and Florida Central is, has those, because we don't at this point, we will once we get our operations and maintenance folks onboard, so we actually contracted with Florida Central to become our designated locomotive engineer. So, it's been a true partnership between CSX, Florida Central, FDOT, to make sure as we're moving forward with construction, we've got everybody involved, so, it's a pretty interesting operation to get those big trains in here and deliver all our materials and stuff.
One last thing, at the last commuter rail commission meeting, I think you said that you were rebidding the, the-
Signal.
Signal work, so have you finished that procurement?
Just the signal, yeah. Yeah, we're still working with Tallahassee on that.
Okay. All right, great presentation, thanks for updating us, we'll have you back in six months.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So that concludes the workshop of the Orlando City Council, thank you for tuning in today or joining us here in chambers.